Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll call the Missoula City Council meeting of February 6, 2017, to order. If you'd please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. And please let the record note that with the exception of Ms. Hares and Ms. Headall, all council members are present this evening. We have minutes from the meeting of January 23. Without objection, they'll be approved. Mr. Debary?
I sent a number of corrections to Ms. Raybine. They're mostly just words that were misinterpreted, so nothing that changes the substance.
Words that were misinterpreted?
So, for instance, instead of saying intent statement, it said intense statement.
Ah, fair enough.
And I'm not sure the statement was that intense.
Thank you, Mr. Debary. Subtlety is at play here in council chambers. All right, we will move on then to our schedule of committee meetings. Ms. Raybine?
So, committee meetings are beginning this coming Wednesday, the 8th of February. Can't believe it's February already. The Land Use and Planning Committee will start out the day at 9:45 in the morning and go until 10:45. Parks and Conservation will follow from 10:50 until 11:15. Public Works will go from 11:20 to 12 o'clock. Administration and Finance will convene at 1 o'clock and go until 1:15. And Committee of the Whole will round out the day from 1:20 to 2:25. All those meetings are being held this coming Wednesday, right here in the council chambers at 140 West Pine.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Any changes to the committee's schedule? Seeing none, we will move on to the public comment portion of our agenda. This is your opportunity to comment on items not elsewhere on our agenda this evening. We save a little, I'm sorry, this was public comment. I didn't need to ease into the consent agenda yet, did I? Sorry, public comments, items not elsewhere on the agenda. If you'd keep your remarks to about three minutes, we would be grateful. Ms. Matthew Jenkins?
Candy Matthew Jenkins. I'm a resident of Ward 2, so I would like to say hi to Ruth Swainy, my new ward person, representative. I've been reading from the Soviet Art of Brainwashing: Psycho-Politics, The Art of Mental Healing as Read in to the Congressional Record on Un-American Activities Between the Year of 1936 to 1939. And we're autonomy, autonomy of stimulus, response mechanisms of man. As an example of this, if a certain individual is beaten and told, and is told during the entirety of the beating that he must obey certain officials, he will, and in the future feel the beginnings of the pain the moment he begins to disobey. The instilled pain itself reacts as a policeman, for the experience of the individual demonstrates to him that he cannot combat and will receive pain from certain officials. In the mind, the mind can become a very complex in its stimulus response, as easily demonstrated in hypnotism, and entire chain of commands having to do with the great and many complex actions, and can be beaten, shocked, or terrorized into a mind, and then, and will there lay dormant until called into action by some similarity in the circumstances of the environment to the incident of punishment. And I have a side comment. As a woman and a mother of six children, three boys and three girls, I found the Women's March in DC to be very inappropriate in some places, akin to sexualizing children in some cases, and I'm referring to this picture of these women dressed like vaginas. I would say that-
And we're at three and a half minutes, Ms. Matthew Jenkins.
That's a form of child abuse, and I feel a personal front for any woman that would do that.
Other general public comment this evening? All right, with that, we will move on to our consent agenda, and that agenda was approved unanimously in council committees, and we save a little time on Monday...
Can I do a public comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just wanted to comment on the-
Your name, please, ma'am?
My name's Sarah Coffey. I live in the Rattlesnake area, and I wanted to comment about the proposed pig experiments at the University of Montana.
Okay.
My hope is that the university will choose compassion over profit from an unethical, non-local lab for the use, the university to utilize cruelty-free devices to experiment on that is more effective and non-barbaric. During a government meeting about funding for research, former U.S. National Institutes of Health Director Dr. Elias Zermeman admitted that experimenting on animals to help humans has been a major failure. He told his colleagues, quote, "We have moved away from studying human disease in humans. We all drank the Kool-Aid on that one, me included, but the problem is that animal testing hasn't worked, and it's time that we stop dancing around the problem. We need to refocus and adapt new methodologies for use in humans to understand disease biology in humans," end of quote. Because experiments on animals are cruel, expensive, and generally inapplicable to humans, the world's most forward-thinking scientists have moved on to develop and use methods that replace animals and are actually relevant to human health. One example is a lifelike, computerized, human-patient simulator that can breathe, bleed, and talk, and has been proven to teach students physiology and pharmacology better than crude exercises that involve crushing the spines of live pigs. Would you think it would be okay if the university took your dog, for example, and crushed its spine in front of you and told you that it was to save humans? Pigs are similar and as intelligent as a dog, and they feel just like dogs, and even wag their tails. I have a petition with almost 3,000 signatures from people that do not want the pig experiments to go on at the university.
Thank you, Ms. Coffey. And you just figured out you're on television, didn't you?
Yeah.
You look great on TV. Thank you for coming down tonight. Any other general public comment this evening?
Yes, real quickly. Good evening. My name is Anja Heister, and I wanted to quickly comment on the same issue. I hope that the University of Montana reconsiders its plan to build a research facility and also a pig research laboratory. I'm a recent graduate from the University of Montana. I have a PhD in Wildlife Conservation Policy and Ethics, and I'm absolutely appalled at the university's plan of building such a research facility and use pigs as research objects. And just enclosure, I would like to quote Dr. Neil Bernard, the founder and current president of the Physicians Committee for Responsible Medicine, a nonprofit organization that promotes humane, non-animal models and testing. And he has once likened animal research to a man who has lost his keys on a street without streetlight. And so what does he do? He goes to a different street with a streetlight to search for his keys. Obviously, he will never find his keys. Animal research is a waste of money. It's a waste of time. It's a waste of animal lives, of human lives, and like I said, I hope that the University of Montana will reconsider. I'm strongly opposed to this plan, whether to build such a facility here within the city limits or in the, in Missoula County where I live. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Heister. Other general public comment this evening? Yes, ma'am.
All 202 accredited osteopathic and allopathic medical schools in the U.S. and Canada terminated the use of live animals to teach medical students. This includes the Uniformed Services University of Health Sciences, which is the U.S. Military Medical School. Under the Animal Welfare Act, no experiments, including those that inflict pain without relief, are outlawed. The Animal Welfare Act is the only federal law that applies to animals used for research. Each species has a unique spinal orientation, movement, kinetics, and neural anatomy. Non-invasive imaging techniques such as PET, SPECT, and FMRI can be used to visualize neuropathology at various time points after injury. In Miami, researchers are collaborating on the Human Spinal Cord Injury Model Project. And all this information, you can read more about the ethical research and education using non-animal testing methods on the Physicians Committee for Responsible Medicine site, which is PCRM.org. Missoula takes pride in being a forward-thinking community. Adding a porcine research facility would be a huge leap backward for the image of our town. The University of Montana can be joining other universities and medical schools in rejecting live animal labs and using more advanced humane and superior methods for doing research. Thank you.
And ma'am, may I have your name for the record? I think I missed it.
Yes, Jennifer Nitz.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else this evening? All right, with that, we will move on to the consent agenda. Items on that agenda were approved unanimously in council standing committees, and we save a little time on Monday evenings by considering those items as a package. Ms. Raybine will read the list of consent agenda items aloud, so those of you in the audience and folks watching at home will know what we're considering, and we'll take comment on those items before we vote. Ms. Raybine?
Thanks. Tonight's consent agenda has 12 items, and the first, as always, is to approve claims, and claims are the city's accounts payable. We're ratifying claims in the amount of $479,194.22 for checks that were dated January 31 of 2017. And number two is to approve claims in the amount of $757,687.69 for checks that are dated tomorrow, February 7, 2017. Number three is to confirm the mayor's appointment of Paul Filicetti to the Cemetery Board to complete a vacated term that commences immediately and expires on April 31 of 2017. Number four is to set a joint city council-Missoula County Commissioners' public hearing for February 27, 2017, on a resolution to expend up to $320,000 of 2006 open space bond proceeds to purchase in fee the Colton Ditch Grove Street property, which is approximately 4.6 acres of land adjacent to the Clark Fork River, to expand the city's open space and conservation lands network, extend the Milwaukee Trail, and pay transaction and project-related costs associated with the acquisition. Number five is to appoint Deek Treadwell, or excuse me, Deek Tidwell and Robert Erickson to the Open Space Advisory Committee for terms commencing January 26, 2017, this last month, and ending January 25, 2019. Number six is to approve the purchase of two 2016 921G Frenin loaders from Titan Machinery of Missoula, Montana, in the amount of $546,386.07 for both loaders, plus $15,292 for an extended warranty for a total purchase price of $561,386.07. Number seven is a two-parter. It's to approve James Hoffman as the planning board-appointed member of the Missoula Consolidated Planning Board for a two-year term beginning January 1, 2017, and to approve the advancement of Dudley and Prada from alternate to regular city council-appointed member of the Missoula Consolidated Planning Board to finish a term that ends December 31 of 2017. Number three is to approve the Consumer Direct Addition Two-Lot Minor Subdivision of 6.21-acre parcel lying north of Howard Razor Drive and east of Consumer Direct Way. It's Zone M2-4 Heavy Industrial, based on the findings of fact and subject to the recommended conditions of approval that are in the staff report. Number nine is an appointment to the Designer V Board. It's to appoint Brandon Princing, Matt Loomis, Sheena Comer-Winter, and Kate Lickven to the Designer V Board as regular members, beginning immediately and ending on June 30 of 2018, and appointing Jeff Rice for the alternate member, as an alternate member, beginning immediately and ending on December 31 of 2018. Number 10 is to appoint Paul Filicetti. He's a busy guy, volunteering for the city, as the downtown member, and Julia McCarthy-McClaverty as the at-large member to the Historic Preservation Committee for terms beginning immediately and ending on December 31 of 2019. Number 11 is to adopt a resolution authorizing the Missoula Redevelopment Agency, or MRA staff, and MRA's engineering consultant DJ and APC to use an alternative project delivery contract for the Mary Avenue West Street Improvement Project to be undertaken in Urban Renewal District Number Three. And finally, number 12 is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Winter and Company perform consultant services for the City of Missoula Building Design, Quality, and Character Management Project in the amount of $159,560 to be completed over 16 months, beginning from the execution of the contract.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Are there questions or comments from council members? Seeing none, anyone in the audience here to comment on any of the items on the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
On the consent agenda, Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Bentley. Bentley votes yes. Debary. Debary votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Marler. Marler votes yes. Swainy. Swainy votes yes. Von Laasberg. Von Laasberg votes yes. West? West votes yes. And Wilkins? Wilkins votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? That is 10 ayes and 2 ebbs and.
And the consent agenda is approved. We'll move on to comments from city staff agencies, boards, commissions, authorities, and the community forum. And I'm aware of two of those reports this evening. We have one from the Franklin to the Fort Neighborhood Council Report. Mr. Loomis?
Hi, I'm Matt Loomis with the Franklin to the Fort Missoula Neighborhood Council. Good evening, thank you for having me. And I honestly don't know how much you want me to talk.
You know, we have a couple of hours, Mr. Loomis, so feel free.
So Jane Kelly from the Office of Neighborhoods said that I should mention sidewalks at least a few times, so I'm going to say sidewalks a few times, because I don't know if we have any in my neighborhood. But as you might know, Franklin to the Fort is a large, kind of pizza slice neighborhood on the west end of the city. It doesn't encompass the most square feet of all the neighborhoods, but I think it's the most densely populated. We have a huge population in that area. It's also the least parked neighborhood in Missoula, although Future Park north of the mall might change that. This is a great time, actually, to update you guys on Franklin to the Fort, because we just had a general meeting where we got to meet some of our neighbors, talk about some concerns, some things we are worried about, some things we like. Some of the current projects, some of the current areas of interest in our neighborhood, I think at the top of the list is a much-needed new Franklin Elementary School that is set to open in time for the next school year. There's, of course, a large town home project on Spurgeon and Eaton that everybody's keeping an eye on. There's an MRA-sponsored sidewalk project along Clark Street, which is in the southern portion of our area, right near there. Of course, there's the upgrade to Mary Avenue West that was just mentioned. That's something we're keeping an eye on. Something else of interest is any possible way we can add sidewalks. And this is where I have a note that says, Jane Kelly made sure that I wanted to say this, so don't forget, sidewalks. The Missoula Invest Health Project, which I'm sure some of you guys are at least aware of, affects, or they're working with three neighborhoods in the city, the three poorest neighborhoods that they identified. We are one of them. So that's something where, right now, they're searching for non-local, outside grant funding to help, help with our areas. Things that they, they noticed the most were our lack of sidewalks. So any public funds that could any possible way be diverted to sidewalks, trails, parks, those are things that they pointed out. We didn't have to show them. That's the kind of stuff we wouldn't turn down from city council if you guys handed us a bag of money with a big dollar sign on it. Some areas of concern for us, we just had a couple meetings, so some of the councils are aware, the Mary Avenue, I'm calling it connection, but the Mary Avenue redesign and connection to the mall. We just don't know, the concern, for those of you that aren't aware, is we just don't know what the traffic patterns are going to be like once that's built. The concern is that, instead of people taking the nice street to Reserve Street or taking the nice street to the mall, that they'll just decide to spill into the neighborhood. The MRA is working with us to at least hope that doesn't happen, and if it does happen, try to mitigate that in the future. But that is definitely something that's on the top of people's minds over there. Density is an area of concern. We're okay with how we are, but we're zoned very dense. We've had projects go in, like the, I think, what is it, 835 townhomes at Spurgeon and Eaton, give or take. We're just hoping that future infill, which is necessary in a growing city, but that future infill is done well and doesn't overtax the infrastructure and the limited resources that we really don't have. Other areas of concern, sidewalks, curbs, gutter, wastewater drains, especially in a season like this, smooth streets. Our neighborhood is probably the least infrastructureed in Missoula as well, so anything council can do, or Public Works, or anybody, is great. And I wanted to end on a positive note, things we really love about our neighborhood, and I think everybody agrees, trees. We have a lot of trees. We have a lot of, although we don't, I think, have a community garden in our neighborhood, we have a lot of just gardens and greenhouses and greenery and just people doing stuff in their yards. Proximity, we don't have a lot of services in our neighborhoods, but we're close to everything, buses, trail systems, the mall, the river, Reserve Street. We're near everything, we're right in the middle of everything, and I've never heard anyone tell me that lives in Franklin to the Fort that they don't like their neighbors. It seems like, and I'm not saying anything bad about anybody else's neighborhoods, and Marilyn can back me up on this, everybody seems to get along. We all have the same common interest. It's a real blue-collar, young professional, young family renters-type neighborhood, and just, especially right now, if you need a sidewalk shoveled, it's going to get shoveled. Do you guys have any questions about Franklin to the Fort? All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Loomis. And we have a community forum report this evening. Mr. Pashke?
Good evening. I'm Richard Pashke. I'm a member of the Neighborhood Council representing Miller Creek, and this evening I'm going to give you a summary of the community forum meeting held on January the 26th. Brad May was moderator, filling in for Michael Funk, who unfortunately was not able to join the council due to family illness. We had two presentations. Aaron Wilson, Transport Division, gave the first presentation. He gave a comprehensive report on Active Missoula 2045 and bicycle facilities master plans. The progress of the plans gave insight into five basic areas: scenarios, evaluation methods, fundings, goals, and implementation strategies. Public comment on the draft plan ends this Friday, February 10, and final adoption is scheduled for the Transportation Policy Coordinating Committee meeting on Friday, February 21. The second presentation was from Will Seaborn, Grant Administrator for the Housing Community Development, who gave an overview of the Community Development Block Grants and Home Programs. A community needs assessment held at the Public Library on February 1 discussed the, basically, what the CDBGs were and how they could be used. An application workshop is scheduled for February 7 here at council chambers at 4:00. Will also briefly discussed home, a funding program for low-cost housing. This is in preparation for a final presentation or action plan, which will be submitted to HUD in mid-May. Other business items include neighborhood project funds and reallocation funds. An overview for a small grant, $500 request for trail rehabilitation in Upper Rattlesnake, was discussed. The motion was approved and passed unanimously. A large grant, $3,000 request to fund Grant Creek Trail, was also discussed. Again, the motion to approve was passed unanimously. The community forum leadership team is down to five members. Two names replaced the nomination to bring the number back to seven, and voting will take place next month. Several reports were given. Jane reported staff interviews would start on February 1. A bus has been reserved for the next city bus tour for April 20, and neighborhood council reports were presented by the representatives. Details of the reports and this summary are available in the published minutes. The next community council meeting is scheduled for February 23. Dave Christman will be the moderator. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pashke. We will move on to special presentations. We do have a proclamation this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, whereas nurturing a love of reading in children is critical to their personal growth and well-being, and whereas research has demonstrated that children who are read to and have conversations with caring adults have greater success in school and in life, and whereas reading for enjoyment and enlightenment can enrich the lives of all people, and whereas reading is a cornerstone of education for people of all ages, and whereas democracy requires an informed citizenry, and reading is fundamental to this purpose, and whereas adults can nurture a lifelong love of learning in children by reading to them, reading with them, and demonstrating the love of reading in their own lives, and whereas the students and teachers of the Missoula International School vow to read more than 300,000 minutes during the month of February, and whereas you should read to your child, read when you're wild, read to a friend, read to the end, read on the road, read an old ode, read a good book, and we know you'll be hooked. I'm here all night, thank you. Now, there are four, I, John Hingham, and Mayor of the City of Missoula and the State of Montana, do hereby proclaim February 2017 as I Love to Read Month in Missoula, and encourage all citizens to pick up a book and give it a look. That will be all of the rhyming this evening, ladies and gentlemen, at least on my part. We'll move on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. State law and our own council rules set guidelines for, pardon me, inviting comment in a formal way on a variety of issues, and following the staff report on each of these items. We'll invite comment. Council typically votes on the same evening as a public hearing, unless one member requests that that item be returned to committee for further consideration. And our first public hearing this evening is on a conditional tavern use at 515 South Higgins Avenue, and our staff report this evening comes from Ms. McNamara.
Good evening. For the record, Anita McNamara with Development Services. This is a request from Guild LLC for approval of a tavern conditional use at 515 South Higgins Avenue. This is the same building previously occupied by the Silk Road Restaurant and Crystal Theater. The applicant is requesting the tavern conditional use for tavern serving beer and wine, although the license would also allow for a casino. A casino is not requested or proposed. The site is on Higgins Avenue on the hip strip, as outlined in blue on this slide. First, I'll cover the growth policy in 2035. The 2035 Our Missoula Growth Policy is the applicable regional plan and recommends a land use designation of urban center. The site is at the location of the star, as shown on the slide, and is surrounded by areas designated urban center also, and is shown in red in the map. The urban center land use designation is recommended for areas where there is a concentration of downtown uses, including high-intensity commercial, office, retail, and arts and entertainment, eating and drinking establishments, and high-density residential. Our Missoula 2035 Growth Policy also encourages preservation and adaptive reuse of historic buildings instead of expanding outward. Two vicinity plans are also applicable to this site, the Downtown Master Plan and the Historic South Side Neighborhood Plan. The Historic South Side Neighborhood Plan contains goals to maintain and strengthen and enhance the unique forms, character, and qualities of the Higgins Third and Myrtle Avenue. area, including its many historically significant structures. The site is within the Missoula South Side Historic District, however, the structure itself is not individually listed on the National Register of Historic Places. As mentioned, this property is located in the hip strip area. That is a sub-district highlighted in the Missoula Greater Downtown Master Plan. The plan boundary is shown here in red, and the red star again shows the location of the subject property. Next, I'll cover zoning of the site. The property shown with the red star again on this slide is Zoned C14, which is Neighborhood Commercial, and is surrounded by properties also Zoned C14, except for the Missoulian property, which is across the street on Higgins to the east, which is Zoned PUD. There are no minimum parcel size requirements for the C14 district for non-residential development. There are no building setback requirements because the property does not abut a residential zoning district, and the building itself is not proposed for any sort of expansion. Municipal Code compliance will be confirmed at the time of building permit approval for a change of use per condition number one. Now, I would describe the applicant's proposal for the site. This is the proposed site plan. There is no expansion of the building proposed with this conditional use as previously stated. The parking requirement for a tavern is calculated based on the number of seats and number of employees. Off-street parking, however, has never existed for this site, making it legal non-conforming. For a change of use, required parking for the new use is compared to required parking for previous use. Additional parking is only required when the parking requirement for the new use exceeds the requirement for the previous use by more than 10%. For the proposed use, 37 parking spaces are required as compared to 50 spaces required for the previous uses. For bicycle parking, one short-term space is required for every 10 required vehicular spaces. At 34.7, 37 spaces required with rounding, this equates to four short-term spaces. And currently, two spaces are provided on the existing rack, which is directly in front of the building. Condition number two requires coordination with the city Bike Ped Program Manager for short-term bike parking and will be confirmed at the change of use building permit review. The next three slides show the floor plans. I have highlighted the tavern use in yellow. The tavern will occupy the front of the building on all three levels of the building. The first slide here is the basement level. A bar, seating, and arcade machines and restrooms are proposed for this level. This is the main floor plan. This is the level where the entrance will be located. This floor will have a bar and seating areas plus restrooms. The basement and upper levels can be accessed from this floor. And this is the upper floor plan. This level will house a kitchen, seating, and a stage area for live entertainment. And this is a view of the Higgins Avenue facade. This is where the entrance will be located that will bring you into the main floor. No major changes are proposed for the facade. And this slide outlines the conditional use review criteria. These criteria require compliance with the zoning standards and address whether the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding area in terms of character relating to the site and building design, operating characteristics such as hours of operation and noise, and review related to traffic safety for all modes of transportation. Compliance with zoning, engineering, and fire standards will be confirmed at the time of building permit approval for a change of use per condition of approval number one. The exterior facade will remain much the same and maintain the character of the existing building. The surrounding area includes a mix of commercial uses, including restaurants and retail. The hours of operation and noise level of the tavern will be similar to the previous restaurant and theater use and other businesses located in the area. The area is served by motorized, non-motorized, and public transit and infrastructure. Public transit is available on Higgins Avenue as well as South Fifth and Sixth Streets approximately two blocks south. And in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the conditional use subject to the two conditions of approval. The first condition requires compliance with zoning, engineering, and fire standards at the time of building permit approval. The second condition requires coordination with the city's Bike and Ped Program Manager regarding short-term bike parking prior to building permit approval. And that concludes my staff report, and the applicant team is here as well to address any questions. And I just wanted to add, it was not in my PowerPoint, but I received a phone call and played phone tag with someone today who did want to say that they were in support of the project. It was the owner of the Betty's Divine business, which is adjacent to this property. And I did play phone tag with her and never got a chance to actually chat with her, but she did want to, in case she didn't get to talk to me, wanted to let me know that.
Thank you, Ms. McNamara.
Thank you.
Anyone care to speak on behalf of the applicant this evening?
Good evening, Erin McEwen. My family and I compose Guild LLC. We have a vision for returning the Butterfly Building back into a vibrant and inclusive destination in downtown Missoula. We've worked a lot with our neighbors developing our business plan and believe that it will be of great benefit to the hip strip. This conditional use for the tavern allows us to serve drinks along with food at prices that are going to be accessible to most Missoulians in a really casual atmosphere, and we think that's going to benefit the hip strip a lot. So all that we have to say is we're here to answer any questions and that we hope you take staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. McEwen. With that, I will open the public hearing. Does anyone care to comment on this proposed conditional use this evening? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Katie Genn Simpson, owner of Bathing Beauties Beads, and I am two doors down from Guild, hopefully. And I just wanted to show my support and enthusiasm for this project.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else this evening? All right, with that, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council members? Ms. Armstrong?
I'm definitely in support of this project. I'm still a little confused about why the third floor is not going to be ADA accessible. I know we talked about the lift in committees, but it looks like there are going to be activities up there in a stage, and I'm just a little confused why it's not going to be accessible for...
Ms. McNamara?
Well, my understanding is there are some physical constraints in the building, and it's, from what I understand from the LUP, where the lift is proposed to go is actually physically in a separate building, because that's actually two different buildings from the front and the back of the structure. And where it is proposed, there is no way to get actually to the top floor. However, ADA compliance will be reviewed at the time of building permit review and will have to be met in some way, shape, or form to the best extent of possible.
Additional questions, Mr. Dabari? Nope? All right, seeing no additional questions. This lives in land use and planning. Mr. Dabari?
So I make the recommended motion to approve the request for a tavern conditional use at 515 South Higgins Avenue in the C14 zoning district in accordance with the city's zoning ordinance Title 20, Sections 20, 15, 020D, and 2085, 070, based on the findings of fact in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval.
And that motion is in order, is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Wilkins?
So I brought up the ADA thing in committee. There's no way you can make that second floor ADA without a huge expense, and I realize that. And I still going to go ahead and approve this, but I, you know, to bring that up, it's just impossible with some of these older buildings, and we have quite a few of them around town that are like that, so. You know, if you ever have a big remodeling project, I hope that's the first thing you do. Thanks.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing, we'll have a roll call vote. Pardon me.
On the conditional use request, Bentley?
Yes.
Bentley votes yes.
Yes.
Dabari votes yes.
Yes.
Hess votes yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jones votes yes.
Marler?
Yes.
Marler votes yes.
Swainy?
Yes.
Swainy votes yes.
Von Losberg?
Von Losberg votes yes.
West?
West votes yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Wilkins votes yes.
Armstrong?
Armstrong votes yes.
Would any of you like to change your vote? That is 10 ayes and 2 ebbs and...
And the conditional use is approved. Our second public hearing this evening is on a permit fee schedule for parking facility maintenance in Title 12 of Missoula Municipal Code. Our staff report this evening comes from Mr. Harvey.
Good evening, Doug Harvey, Development Services. Yeah, this is to set fees for a portion of Missoula Municipal Code 1222095 Parking Lot Maintenance. We agreed that there would be fees necessary for some of the levels of review. We base these fees on the existing ADA fees for new construction. Tier one of Parking Lot Maintenance, which is simply striping overlays, surface maintenance, there will be no fee. And then tier two, where the parking lot is paved, repaved, or totally reconstructed, the fees will be based, again, they're based on ADA fees. Up to 2,000 square feet will be 353 dollars. 2,000 to 50,000 square feet will be 363, and then greater than 50,000 feet will be 363 plus one penny per square foot over 50,000 square feet.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. With that, I will open the public hearing on the proposed fee schedule. Anyone in the audience care to comment? All right, with that, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council members? Seeing none, pardon me, Mr. Hess?
Thanks, Mayor. I move we adopt a resolution of the Missoula City Council amending Exhibit C, the engineering fee schedule, in Resolution 8085 to revise fees relating to parking facility maintenance and accessibility standard in accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing, we'll have a roll call vote.
On the motion to adopt the resolution and the fee schedule, Dabari? Dabari votes yes. Hess? Hess votes yes. Jones?
Jones?
Jones votes yes. Marler?
Marler votes yes.
Swainy?
Yes.
Swainy votes yes.
Von Losberg?
Yes.
Von Losberg votes yes.
West?
West votes yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Wilkins votes yes.
Armstrong?
Armstrong votes yes.
And Bentley?
Bentley votes yes.
Would any of you like to change your vote? That's 10 ayes and 2 ebbs and...
And the fee schedule is approved. We have no additional public hearings this evening. We'll move on to communications from the mayor. I have a couple of items this evening. It is, as it turns out, winter in Missoula, and it's weird. So what has happened, ladies and gentlemen, is pothole season has commenced by virtue of a little bit warmer weather, and our crews in streets are simultaneously sanding, de-icing, plowing, sweeping, filling potholes, and paving. So it's a little challenging out there. A couple of things to note, if you see a puddle, there is a good chance that there is a hole under the puddle. So be extraordinarily careful, if you can, driving through those puddles. There are a couple of significant areas of concern, the construction of Madison Street Bridge has created some bumps. And so we've had crews out this afternoon on the north end of that project, working to smooth that out. That is going to be a continuing issue, so please plan your trips accordingly. It's going to be a little slow for a while on that end of the bridge just by virtue of the fact that construction is what it is and the weather is what it is, and it turns out we have shockingly little control over that. We'll be out patching potholes. Please don't hesitate to contact us anytime you see a crater, and if you happen to fall into one, feel free to call us as well, and we'll do our best to get you out. Again, those crews are on that case. And this evening at 11:00, we will close the Russell Street Bridge in its entirety for likely a couple of hours. There is a lot to be done there. That bridge, of course, is going to be rebuilt, but that's not happening for a while, and there's a hole in the deck that needs to be taken care of, so we will be on that this evening. So again, if you're out after 11:00 and want to cross the river, that's not your best bet. Fortunately, we have some other bridges, and I want to compliment our street crews. It's been, you know, all winters have their challenges. This one has been, I think, particularly challenging by virtue of the fact of the amount of precipitation that's landed. So thanks to Brian and the crew for getting out there 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and even on holidays to take care of business. And thanks to citizens for your patience. I recognize this isn't much fun, but there are some small prices to be paid for living in paradise, and potholes are among them. So with that, I will move on to general comments from council members, begin this evening with Ms. Jones, and Mr. Von Losberg, Mr. Hess, and...
So I hope I'm doing this okay. I wanted to first acknowledge and thank all of the people who had also applied for Ward II. We had some really strong applicants, and it's made me feel good to see how well-qualified they were and that they were passionate about making sure that there was a good representation for our award. So I wanted to acknowledge the other applicants. And then I also wanted to acknowledge, in addition to I Love to Read Month, it's also Black Heritage Month. So if that's something that people are interested in supporting or learning more about, the University of Montana Black Student Union has a number of activities going on. There'll be several going on this Friday, starting at 10:00 until 5:00 in the University Center.
Thank you, Councilwoman Swainy. Mr. Wilkins? Ms. Marler? Ms. Bentley? Ms. Armstrong? Ms. West? Did I skip you inadvertently, Ms. Armstrong?
I'm glad the mayor brought up snow plowing. I've gotten some hate mail and hate calls about snow plowing, and they are out there. They are not just sitting idle in a parking lot. They are out there picking up snow, and they can't be everywhere at one time, but these guys have not had a four-hour shift off since this began, and they are absolutely out there plowing. So please be patient.
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong. Ms. West? Oh, and Mr. Dabari?
Just an observation, that if you're going to win a half of a football game, it's best to win the second half.
Yet another pearl of wisdom this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, I learn something every day in this job, fortunately. We will move on to the committee report portion of our agenda, folks. Items here weren't approved unanimously in council committees. Chairperson of the committee will make a motion reflecting that committee's action and will invite comment on those items. Our first committee report this evening is on the Fox Site Master Development Agreement, and Ms. Bentley has agreed to make that motion in Ms. Headall's absence.
I move that we approve the city entering into Fox Site Master Development Agreement with Hotel Fox LLC and authorize all appropriate city signatures thereon.
And that motion is in order, is there discussion on the motion?
Ah-ha. I support this motion. I wanted to say a few things about the development agreement because I have been getting a lot of email comments and following some Facebook discussion about this. I think that there's some lack of clarity or even misunderstanding about what we're asking, what we're being asked to vote on tonight. And I'll preface this by saying I'm in a union, my parents are both in unions, well, they're retired now, but I'm from a union family. And I feel that to some degree, this has been kind of simplified down in the community discussions to the point that if we, anyone who votes on this tonight is somehow against labor unions, and I really don't feel that that's a good representation of what's in front of us tonight. The development agreement that we're voting on tonight is itself the product of many years of negotiations, and the negotiations are between the developer and the city and the MRA. MRA, and public comment therein. The different city council, or the different city government departments have weighed in on various aspects of this. Different parts have been in public city council meetings over the last five years. And there are certain things in the triangle site development that are still being worked out, like right-of-way vacations and designs of public spaces. So a lot of things going on here. And I feel like this is, it's been a little bit presented that if all we do is vote to force there, to force the inclusion of a labor peace agreement, then somehow these will all be labor or union jobs, and that's not really what is in front of us. We've been asked by the Community Benefits Coalition, and, you know, I appreciate their thinking on this, but they've asked us to make the agreement tonight contingent on requiring the developer to come to a, some kind of, not some kind of, specifically a labor peace agreement with the CBC. But that agreement is not in front of us. It has yet to be negotiated, and it would be an additional and external object. And the negotiation of that external agreement would not include any elected people. City council would not be a party to it, and it wouldn't be a city government thing. And because of that, I think it'd be giving up something that we've been elected to do. And I think that it would not be responsible of us to do that at this point. I absolutely think that we can do something as a community to require living wages in future projects. Or I know at one point with the MRA, there was a past ordinance that addressed living wages in projects where, to financing was involved, that doesn't apply to this project, that doesn't mean that we can't keep talking about this, because, as I mentioned, there's a lot going on in this negotiation. So right now, we don't have a proposal that includes the labor peace agreement, and we didn't even see the draft of that, which is a pretty basic boilerplate language. We didn't see that until late last week. So to be clear, if we did what the CBC is requesting right now, we'd be really turning over our authority, as your, as a community elected officials, to a group of people who I agree with and are my friends and neighbors. And remember, Matt Luma said that everybody in Franklin to the Fort neighborhood gets along with their neighbors, right? Remember that after the meeting, guys. But the folks in the CBC who'd be doing those negotiations aren't elected people. The meetings would not be public, et cetera. So it's just not something that I can support right now. But I am very open to continuing to work on something to address those concerns about living wage jobs. And I've been on city council 11 years. I've mentioned that before. I can't think of another council that would be more sympathetic to this, and even going back a couple councils before I was on city council. So I think it's a good time to be talking about this, but I just don't think this is the time to do it. And I'm going to support it the way that it is, and I appreciate everyone's work in the community that's gone into this.
Further discussion? I have Ms. Jones.
Thanks, Marilyn. That echoes a lot of the things that I was planning on saying. I tried to write out my comments a little bit here. I sat on the Fox Working Group for the last year, and I think consistently, there was a message to the developer and to the, the Community Benefits Coalition that they should be talking and trying to work through these things. But I also never have felt like city council could create an ultimatum that this had to be agreed to. And I sat down and thought through all of this, and I really think that this is not the right way to get from point A to point B. This is a huge policy decision, and we need to sit down as a community and talk through it. There are states that have statutes that require labor peace agreements for public projects. There are municipalities that have ordinances, and I think we need to have that community discussion and set that aside and give it the discussion that it merits, because it's really a quite complex policy decision. And I think, I think in the meantime, as the, if this master agreement goes forward and the collateral agreements are being worked on, I want to encourage the developers and the CBC to continue to talk and try and work through these things. Just because we're not going to attach a labor peace agreement to this master agreement doesn't mean that the talking is over. I think you guys need to continue with that, because I think there are many areas where you can come to agreements. But I think we, as city council, need to take this and take this opportunity to, to address this issue. And I'm planning on submitting a referral. I think we need to talk about this, and how could we possibly address this issue in terms of a public works that we do with the MRA? It's complicated. As I was sitting, thinking it through yesterday, or today, I was thinking, you know, we tried to attach the MRA to our Department of Housing to create affordable housing and try and finance some of that. So we don't want to be taking from that while we create higher wages. It's, everything is connected. So we have to sit down, and that's what this body does, and figure out what's going to be the best policy for Missoula. So I'm in support of the motion. I appreciate that the Community Benefits Coalition has raised awareness on this issue, but I think we need to pass the agreement as is and put our efforts into pursuing the discussion that we need to have on council.
Mr. Von Laasberg?
Thanks. I'll be fairly brief. President Marler's comments and Ms. Jones' comments, I would echo virtually all of them. I'm supportive of the agreement as it stands now, and I think President Marler was very articulate about the concerns relega, relative to the delegation of authority potentially with the proposed language about requiring the labor peace agreement that, as she pointed out, we didn't see a copy of until after the committee meeting. I wanted to also reassure people, to some extent, because some of the communications that have occurred over the past several days have, I think, expanded into some areas that we've actually made a substantial amount of progress on. And I had asked MRA staff to include the land use agreement, for instance. It's the only other agreement portion of this where we have a working draft that's up. And, you know, there were some concerns expressed, for instance, about environmental considerations. And I would urge people to take a look at that agreement. That's something we had in land use and planning a couple months ago, I believe. Worked on extensively, brought it back. Some council members, you know, expressed an interest for interest, an interest in expanding some of the protections along the waterfront, for instance. And I know that those folks worked with, you know, organizations like the Clark Fork Coalition, well-respected in the community, to do just that and beef up some of the plans and requirements around that. And those are represented in that land use agreement, for instance. We have an opportunity to look at, you know, potentially beneficial aspects of a labor peace agreement and consider them in the operations agreement, which is one of the corollary agreements. You know, there's the master development agreement, and then there are half dozen, actually more than a half dozen, other corollary agreements that all feed into this, and they all depend on each other for the whole project to go. So I think we can return to some of those concepts, and I'll leave it at that for now. I'm also very interested in public comment.
Mr. Wilkins?
So this is kind of hard for me. I made my living with Labor's 1334 in Missoula Union. Always looked forward about this time of year, is there going to be a job for me so I can pay my mortgage? And there was, you know. I got on the science building at the university, the underground lecture hall, things that were done by contractors, local. So I appreciate what Marcus tried to do. My understanding that it isn't quite all legal. If we did pass that, that we could probably get in trouble along the way. I think my main concern is that the Fox people hire local. Hopefully, they hire union local, because if you want a good job done, they're the best people that can do it. So I'll support the motion, and thank you, Marilyn. You said it a lot better than I could say it.
Mr. Bari?
So I'm going to support the motion as well. We've gotten a number of email messages from folks in the community, and I really appreciate their passion around this issue, especially of trying to create jobs in this community that provide a living wage. A week ago Friday, the Bureau of Business and Economic Research had a presentation on the economic outlook, and the thesis of that presentation was wages, good-paying jobs. So as Ms. Marler had mentioned, I don't think you can find a more sympathetic group of counselors. I think maybe all of us, save for Ms. Swainy, were endorsed by labor, and this is something that I know I personally have wrestled with for the number of weeks that this has been on our agenda. And from Wednesday's meeting, when we all seemed a little bit less educated than we wanted to be about this, I, and I know a number of other counselors, spent many hours over the last several days educating ourselves about this. And I don't think I could say it any better than some of my colleagues already have. But I think if we were to move forward to force the issue of including a labor peace agreement, we would be doing a disservice to the community by this council giving up its oversight prerogative in how we move forward with these types of agreements. As Mr. Von Laasberg said, there is other opportunity, and Ms. Jones had said, there's still opportunity for folks to continue talking, and I encourage that. I think we all want to make a specific statement, policy statement, that we do care about wages in this community, and we do care about how employees are treated. And we are all going to be, I think all of us here on council are going to be looking towards making sure that, that future employees of this project are treated well and are paid well. So I'm going to support this motion.
Ms. Armstrong?
So I want to echo Brian Sentiment's. Signing this agreement tonight allows the conversation to begin on all of the issues that we've received communications on. If there's no project, there's no conversation. And I've gotten emails regarding wages and labor and benefits, land conservation, energy conservation. One woman was very concerned about solar panels and wanting some sort of energy production to be on the buildings. And all those conversations get to start if this project happens. We have not forgotten about these, but now we get to start the heavy lift of incorporating all your desires into the project now. So please, but don't be disheartened. This is, this is going to happen, and we will continue to talk to you, and the developers will continue to talk to you. The developer group, the gentleman that's here tonight, he lives here, and I know he wants to be a good neighbor. So just please stay with us and trust us to keep working on this for you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, I think I'll offer a little perspective here of my own. And it, I think I'll begin with a little bit of history, and that, that involves about 30 years of what now has been a hole in the ground for the better part of 15 or 20. Originally, this project was a discreet hotel, one hotel, sitting in the current hole in the ground that the city owns at the corner of Orange and Front. And over the course of lots of conversations over the last several years, we have had a development partner who has been interested in a broader vision for our community and a project that will make a difference, not only on that corner, but in the health of downtown Missoula for a very long time to come. We started with a hotel project, and what we have today, because of the conversations we've had, is a master plan that redevelops almost nine acres of a core commercial corridor in downtown Missoula. Will spur about $150 million or better in investment, and much of that investment will be in the form of wages that will be paid to folks who are building those facilities, ranging from a hotel, conference center, parking. We'll have trails and parks facilities. There will be retail office and housing, as well as additional pedestrian connections and non-motorized connections and street connections. This project is much bigger because we have had a partner with vision. This project is much bigger because this council and local government have a tool through tax increment financing to enhance projects, to make them more than the sum of their parts. And by virtue of our investment, we'll stimulate the downtown economy in pretty significant ways. So we've gone from a single-use hotel to a multi-use project that will, I believe, really change the landscape of downtown Missoula for the better. I have the benefit of having lived here for all 52-plus years of my life, and I remember when you could go to the Fox Theater for a quarter. I remember eating at the Mustard Seed, and I remember buying Swedish fish at the Super America on that corner. And all of that was fine for the time, but this is much better, a much, much better use of that beautiful corner in downtown Missoula, Montana, along the Clark Fork River. With regard to community value, an email circulated late last week suggested that there was limited community value in this project, and I would argue that the opposite is true. This project builds a conference center for the city of Missoula that provides a new stage, a new venue, and new opportunities for downtown. And that conference center will be built at limited expense to the city of Missoula, along with a whole bunch of parking spaces that will be built at limited expense to the city of Missoula and will be repaid over time. Those are significant benefits to this community that, that this development will revitalize the riverfront and provide plaza and park space and public space that doesn't exist today. What exists there is a, is a pretty ratty-looking surface parking lot and a derelict three-tiered parking garage facing the Clark Fork River, and that will change as a result of this product, as a result of this project. This project, as a function of that $150 million investment over time, will generate considerable commercial tax base that will continue to help us do the work that we do in local government all day long, and that is patch potholes and pay police officers and firefighters and do the many great things that we do here at the city of Missoula to serve people all day long. Those projects will provide jobs. In addition to the hotel that will be there, and the conference center that will be there, we'll have union labor managing the parking. We will likely have union labor building the buildings. We will likely have union labor in the form of healthcare workers in medical office buildings at that site. We will have long-term employment that will benefit this community mightily, and those will be good jobs. One thing to know about, about the hospitality industry, at least in Missoula, by virtue of the fact that we have some degree of competition here and we're a desirable place, hotels like the Doubletree, for example, another downtown hotel, the average wage at that facility for workers matches the city of Missoula's living wage ordinance. It's not perfect. It could always be better, and I don't doubt that, that there is always opportunity for improvement and that labor, and that organized labor might provide some of that opportunity. This is not about me, but I did see an email today that suggested that I am, unlike the rest of the city council, somehow anti-labor. For 12 years, I have been the chief executive of the city of Missoula, and I've signed labor agreements that have brought the Missoula Police Department's rookie officers from among the lowest-paid in the state to the highest-paid in the state, top of market, so that we can attract the best people and retain them. And those contracts were negotiated on my watch and under my direction, because I believe in labor and I believe the fact that people are what make a difference in the way we operate this city. We have 11 bargaining units at the city of Missoula, and I negotiate with all of those bargaining units, and I have supported every labor contract along the way. My father was a union printer who largely lost his job when his union was busted, and the man was never the same. And had that union remained, his life would have been better. My mom was a registered nurse. She was a union laborer in her lifetime, and I've never had an opportunity to be part of a union by virtue of the nature of my work, but I would likely sign up if there were a mayor's union, and maybe somebody out there wants to organize. And if so, hand me a card, and I'll have a careful look at it. But this isn't about me. This is about this project and this community moving forward and the suggestion that some... This is about this project and this community moving forward and the suggestion that somehow the city of Missoula, in the form of its elected officials are anti-labor, is baloney. And the facts contradict that all day long, and as some of the members of this body have suggested tonight, there is likely, in my experience, there has not been a more sympathetic city council nor a more sympathetic administration with regard to organized labor in the city of Missoula in recent memory. So what you have before you tonight is a development agreement that brings a project forward that provides a level playing field with a development partner who has committed all day long to abiding by the laws of this country with regard to labor, and I guarantee you would not endeavor to interfere with organization on those grounds. And we went so far as to get them to agree to that, and the coalition rejected the notion of that agreement, so we withdrew it. I would urge this body this evening to pass it, as you have suggested, as it stands. We'll have lots of opportunity to look at other components of the ongoing development here, but tonight, we've got a great project that does a great thing for the community, and it deserves your vote. With that, if there's no further discussion, I'll ask for public comment. And if you'd keep your remarks to about three minutes, we'd be grateful. I recognize I didn't do that.
Mr. Anderlich?
Good evening. I'm Mark Anderlich with the Missoula Community Benefits Coalition and the Union Unite Here. Our group has worked for almost six years now to make this Riverfront Triangle project the best one possible for all in the Missoula community. Over all those years, we have been clear and consistent with the developer and other parties about our intents and proposals. We have gathered signatures on petitions supporting the Community Benefits Coalition. And we, right here, it's 1,000 signatures, and we wish to put those into the record, however that gets done. I'll get those over. Thank you. Barely three weeks ago, after years of work, we caught our first glimpse of the proposed master development agreement, which is before you this evening. This city council meeting is the fourth city of Missoula public meeting we have attended since then. Several weeks ago, you have had before you a proposed amendment to the master development agreement about labor peace, which we would have been fine with, but which you have so far rejected. Instead, the mayor has offered up a couple of proposals, ostensibly defined a resolution to our concerns, but he has done that without ever consulting us on the content of those proposals. The first mayor's proposal we rejected because it does not effectively address issues we have consistently raised, it does not provide the city protection from negative financial impact of labor disputes, and it is illegal. The second proposal was little better, and we were given no time to review that one. We know you are frustrated with how this project is rolling out. We are as well. We are frustrated in how quickly the public process is being rushed on such a complicated agreement. In addition, our frustration is wider than just about the question of the city putting in place legal and meaningful language to protect itself in the event of labor disputes. In their separate dealings with our coalition, the developers have thus far refused to sign any agreements that guarantee minimum amounts of affordable housing, that pledges participation targets for women, low-income people, and people of color in apprenticeship programs, or that addresses our job-related concerns in a way that would avoid unnecessary labor disputes. And there are other matters as well. The bottom line is that this master development agreement, which is the prime financial instrument for this project, as it currently is written, will mostly provide trickle-down benefits for the Missoula community. Yes, there is some merit to what has been currently agreed to, and we would like to see this project be done with the benefits that are already there. But as it stands, the proposed master development agreement is missing important pieces, pieces that we have brought up for six years, and that is unacceptable. The city of Missoula can do much better. We ask you to delay any decision on the master development agreement. Please vote to send this matter back to committee. The master development agreement, as it is currently written, is not a good investment of the public's resources. Missoula can do better. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is John Wolverton. I'm a resident of the Franklin neighborhood in Ward 6, and I'm also a member of Missoula Advocates for Sustainable Transportation and on the steering committee of the Community Benefits Coalition. The mayor noted just a few minutes ago how this hole in the ground has been there for 30 years. So what I would ask is, what's the rush? During a period of time when the developers were focused on other projects, it just kind of sat latent, they weren't talking to us, and then all of a sudden, there's a rush. This is not just about labor. It's a huge project with tremendous potential to be a really good thing for this community, and we have been engaging and trying to help make it that way. But at this point, we don't have any assurance or guarantees about the proposals that we've put forward, be they for protecting the river or transportation assets, or for labor or for housing. There's no assurance, and I ask you to send it back to committee to delay this, give the developers time to appreciate our community values better, to work a little bit longer with the Community Benefits Coalition, to work toward a signed agreement before we come back to this point. What this does is it keeps us from having to react to what the developers produce. It means we're all out there together in front of this, moving towards something really good. The football analogy I heard earlier was, are we at halftime? I think we are actually closer to the end of the third quarter, and this fourth quarter is going to feel real, real crunchy if we don't have a good game plan before we move further along in this game. Please send this back to committee. Thank you.
I'm Janet Piero. I'm on the Community Benefits Coalition Steering Committee. I've been working on this for about five years, and you may have a couple more years than I do on it. This labor peace agreement notion confused me, as it did some of you as you were introduced to it. I just want to point out, there is a boilerplate you've referred to that's four pages long. All that we've ever suggested be in the master agreement is one paragraph. This paragraph would basically say, hey, developers, get together with CBC and come up with an agreement, negotiate it. So there is no predefined what is in an agreement. And I like to say it is, we just want everybody to play nice. Labor will agree to not disrupting business by boycotting or picketing. The developers will agree not to hassle employees if they want to unionize. The agreement doesn't, anyhow, it's a little paper. If you haven't, we hand it out at MRA. I don't think it's been handed out in committee or here, so I will send that. And just one other point, there's a lot been said about the timing. Do we really need this now? Can't we do it later? We did some research and found that some relevant examples. And I have these to hand out to a bunch of Hilton Hotels, and they're relevant because Dieter Huckstein, one of the Fox developers, served as president of operations for Hilton from 1994 to 2004. During that time, Hilton Hotels signed four very similar agreements with Union Here, which is now Unite Here, Mark's union. Two of those agreements went into effect as Hilton won the job for the development. Same timeframe we're talking about. In 2000, the Houston Convention Center with the hotel operated by Hilton, and in 2002, the San Diego Convention Center and the Hilton Bayfront Hotel. We request that you delay the decision and do some further research for the possible inclusion of a paragraph to insist that the...
Let's stick near the microphone, please, Ms. Piero. Thank you.
So that we can come to an agreement before the master agreement is signed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening?
Hi, I'm Julia Schechter. I am on the board for the Bike-Bike Alliance for Missoula. And I'm just going to be brief, but as a representative for BWAAM, we just ask that the master development not be approved until it's been in accordance with the Community Benefits Coalition. It does feel a bit rushed, and we just want to make sure the community is on board until this moves ahead. BWAAM, as you know or may know, advocates for safety and accessibility in Missoula by promoting and enhancing bike and walking infrastructure for transportation and recreation. The Riverfront Triangle provides a great opportunity to connect and improve existing infrastructure and encourage transportation by foot, bike, and transit, making Missoula a better place for everyone. So we just ask that you please delay any decision on this project until the developers guarantee and writing an agreement with the Missoula CBC. Thank you.
Next, ma'am? Sir?
Mayor Engen, excuse me, members of the council. My name is Dave Shively. I am a faculty member at the University of Montana, where I teach geography and community and environmental planning. I am a University Faculty Association member, full member of our faculty union there. I'm just mentioning that in case you are aware of the UFA there. So I would like to as well request that you delay a decision on this particular proposal. I think it's a good project. It's not a great project. It could be a better project, especially taking into account the objectives of enhancing livability in this particular community. Missoula prides itself on being a community that is striving to be a sustainable community. And as you know, the sustainability stool rests on three legs, the three E's, environment, economy, and equity. This labor peace agreement would help to ensure the equity portion is being addressed in our community. I don't believe that by delaying a decision on this particular proposal, you are necessarily vesting some other entity with your authority or with power, but you are simply allowing appropriate time for consideration of a very complex agreement and one that can be improved. So I beg you to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am?
Mayor Engen, members of the Missoula City Council, my name is Lou Ann Hanson. I'm a Missoula County Public Schools middle school teacher. I'm an executive board member of the Missoula MEA, MFT Local 7638. And I'm also a trustee of the Missoula Area Central Labor Council. I come before you tonight to urge you to delay your vote, and as it pertains to this agreement with Fox Partners, to develop the Riverfront Triangle. First, there needs to be a set amount of affordable housing in this agreement. We all know that, we just don't have a whole lot of that here in Missoula. That needs to happen. And these are all things that the Benefits Coalition has asked for. Secondly, there needs to be goals to recruit women and minorities, as well as low-income area residents for construction and apprentice programs for this particular project. And finally, there needs to be guarantees, and I'm really worried about, should it go forward from here and be approved, then there are going to be no guarantees. But there needs to be guarantees that employees would have a fair and expedited way to freely choose whether to organize a union. Workers would then be able to organize for higher wages and benefits, and this in turn would greatly benefit the entire Missoula community. And somebody talked earlier about this being illegal in any way. It's not. We're just asking for them to be able to have this in writing, that this is okay. I really worry that we go from here tonight, it's down the road, and it's kicked down the road, and it's kicked down the road further and further, and so there's no guarantee. Okay? Should this body, the Missoula City Council, not include these three Community Benefits Coalition concerns in the final agreement with Fox Partners, the way will be paved for Fox Partners to make huge profits by taking advantage of workers in our community. I'm not saying they will, but the way is paved for that. I'm urging you to delay, again, a final decision on this project until further discussion can take place. This project must be approved as a win for the city, a win for this community and its workers, and might I add, taxpayers, and a win for Fox Partners. If a vote is taken tonight, which it looks like it will be, I'm urging you to delay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Weston, and I'm here to speak in favor of the Community Benefits Coalition and really urge you guys to delay a vote. And I want to just say, I have no problem with development, and I don't think the issue is whether or not it's a nice thing to have at that spot. There's no disagreement there, and if people who knew me know that I actually, one of my favorite hobbies is to drive around and sort of guess what's going to go in different places and debate all the merits, I have no problem with development. But I want to tell a bit of a story, and that is, I met Mark fairly recently, and he and I were talking quite a bit about, and you guys probably, because I came in here before, talking about the Women's March. And without batting an eye, also like Ruth before, without batting an eye, Mark wanted the Central Labor Council to be part of that. And he also put forward lots of arguments that was not particularly easy to make about why they should help finance a bus, or more than that. And my understanding is that that was not an easy argument to make because there's still a lot of uncertainty and a lot of division and a lot of confusion about the connections between the march that people would want and workers' rights, and that they're often sort of siloed and separate. And Mark spent a lot of time trying to talk about sort of the basis for unity and the basis for solidarity. And he actually donated a huge amount of money to that march that made it possible for a lot of people to go. Tons of people were incredibly happy about it. But more importantly, it put rubber, sort of, money hit the road in terms of what actual solidarity looks like when he did that. And so when I think a little bit about this march, and I think, yeah, of course, Missoula is going to have seven buses to a march like this. It is wonderful and fabulous, but also not that hard of a choice to make for this community to go and support women marching, to be against the discrimination, to be against the GOP rhetoric that's been coming down. What's a little bit harder to accept is that we can march for women's rights but not accept an agreement that actually helps support women who are trying to get more jobs, better apprentices, higher wages. It becomes a little bit empty. This march is not just for women who have those jobs already, but also trying to create those opportunities for people of color. And so the march itself is a stand-in for solidarity around a whole host of issues. And so I think we have to really think about this. In the current political climate that we're in, where there are right-to-work laws being passed and unions are being gutted and unions are being attacked, where does Missoula stand on that? From what I understand, the Community Benefits Coalition has put six years of work into this, only to be told it's a great project, we like incorporating it, but now with the last final draw in the last three weeks, we're going to let that go. That does not strike me at the heart of what solidarity is. It does not strike me at the heart of what community is, and it does not strike me as a beginning model of how we as a community can stand up to not only the national stuff, but the stuff that's hitting us all over the state. And I would love to live in a community, and I would love to live in a city that does development, but does it right. Does it right for the people of color and does it right for the women who otherwise would have jobs that are not sustainable. I really, really urge you to vote, I mean, delay it. I hear what you guys say, that if you have a project, we need to have a project, therefore have the discussion, or I hear that you're validating that these issues are really, really important. They're important right now, not after you vote for the project. It makes no sense. So if they're important issues, discuss them and give some time for them before you vote on the project itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Further discussion?
Mayor Ingram, City Council, I'm Roberta Crane. I'll be brief, because everybody's already said what I would say, but just basically that it seems clear that there's a lot to still discuss on this project. There are two different sides from people that generally think alike. So I would really encourage you to delay the vote. Don't vote tonight. Send it back to committee. Talk more with Mark and the other people and see if you can come to something that's more in agreement than this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Anyone else this evening? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Lee Bridges. I just learned of this tonight on the news, so I'm real new to this. I'm representing myself, but I'm also a union member and grateful as a union sheet-metal journeyman that I can have the opportunity as a woman to work and make a livable wage with great benefits in this town. I urge you to take this proposal and this project back to committee and look at the fact that we have great talent. I've lived here for 35 years, and I am grateful to have all you guys doing the great job that you're doing. I'm also grateful for a union job and for the wages that we make as a union. And I also know that the developers make a fine amount of money with this development, and they can afford to pay a workable, livable, sustainable wage for us union members who get the benefits and put our money right back into our own communities as we do. I'm grateful for this opportunity to voice my opinion. I agree with everybody else's comments that have been voiced here. I just wanted to add that I think that they can certainly afford to give our working community here in Missoula the chance to make a livable wage as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bridges.
And by the way, I appreciate the snowplow work that they do. They do a great job on our roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Tarby. I am a student and a concerned community member, and I would just like to ask you tonight to delay this vote. I've heard the city council members express that they haven't had a lot of time to put into this, and they've been kind of surprised by stuff that was being talked about, that they didn't know about. And I've heard that Community Benefits, people say that they didn't have time to talk about it with you guys either. So I think the only smart decision would be to delay it and have more time to talk about it. And I really appreciate your work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is, excuse me, Dan Cedarburg, and I'm at 269 West Front is my business address. And I'm on a whole bunch of different downtown association boards and have been for a number of years. And when I heard about this project, I thought back to 1990, when I was the president of the MDA. And that year, I went to all the MRA board meetings. And as it turns out, the Fox site and the development proposal for the Fox site was on the agenda quite frequently that year. And the proposal was for St. Pat's to build an extension of the hospital on the site. And it was voted down because the MRA felt that over the years, that we could do something better with that, that extension of the medical campus on the riverfront wasn't appropriate. And I have to admit, looking back on that over these years, there have been more than once I've thought they made a mistake, because we haven't had a good project. However, when I saw this project come forward, I realized that they'd made a good, good decision. This is a great project. As I said, I've been working on these kind of development issues in downtown for 30 years, and this project is transformational for downtown. And with that said, two more things. First of all, thank you to the council for getting the project and to the MRA for getting the project to this point. When I first saw it, I thought, wow, if that can happen, not very likely. But you guys, I know, have done a ton of work to get it to this point. The second thing I would like to say is, there have been a lot of talk about, let's wait. Well, if you're into this project, time is money. You can't wait. You have to go forward. It's been going on forever, and we need to move forward. So I would strongly urge you to move forward tonight and vote for the motion and keep the project moving. We can have the discussions, as you said, as we go forward, but let's keep it rolling. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cedarburg? Yes, sir.
My name is Bob Moore. I think we're making a mistake in just discussing delaying this vote and so forth. I think the vote should be that it's terminated. This spending taxpayers' money is, I think, grossly out of line. You've gone too far. You've gone too far. You're getting ready to spend tens of millions of dollars on a shopping center. I've been in many places in this country. I've never seen a city spend taxpayers' money so freely for the benefit, 90% of it, for businessmen and developers. This project's been in effect for, or been in the talking stage for many, many years. Why hasn't something happened already? If this was such a great project for the developers, the cities, or just the city itself, why hasn't something been done in all these years? I am glad to see that I haven't seen anything where you're gonna pay taxpayers' money for, because it's in a blighted area. I don't even know where the area is. I think you should change the vote to stopping this project. If they want to do it, sell them the land, and they can do it. This taxpayers' transfer, taxpayers' money to businessmen and developers is totally out of control. Totally out of control. I wish you would stop the MRA. Mayor, you seem to think it's saved the world. I haven't quite seen that yet. I'm not here as long as you are, but I haven't seen where the MRA has saved the city. We go down and pay $50,000 to change a laundromat-type facility to a casino. Nothing, we need more than another casino in this town. I think every time you put a new casino in, you ought to put a palm, what do you call these places where you get money on loans, to take care of it. And I haven't seen anything on how much, I haven't read much, I have to say that, but I haven't seen anything about how much money taxpayers are gonna spend for this project. Can you tell me how much they're gonna spend? Or do you think you have got the obligation to tell the city taxpayers how much you're going to spend and go from one place to the pockets of developers? I own a lot of, I won't say that, but I'm very familiar with developers and businessmen and so forth.
You're at three and a half minutes, sir.
Okay, I apologize. I think you're making a mistake with this project. If it was a good project, it would have been done a long, long time ago. I'm hearing everything back to 1984 or something. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this evening? Sir?
My name is Ron Cowan. I'm with the Transportation Communications Union, Local Lodge 43 here in Missoula. And I think that everybody said as much as I can say. And I just ask that you table this and not vote for it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name's Steve Wells. I just wanted to say that when I heard, it sounds like a lot of you have thought about the issues brought up here, what we can do maybe going down the road, but I haven't heard anything that sounded very concrete. It sounded like people were like, well, we probably need to look at this, or we need to find something to do. And what I'm wondering is, is why not take care of it upfront? It seems to me like that would be the way to go. You guys tonight could pass an update to the living wage ordinance in Missoula, that then presumably you could also include new construction. And then you can go ahead and you could approve this. But at least that way, you'd actually have done something to hold them accountable down the road in case, you know, their finances turn bad, suddenly their stockholders aren't making as much money, suddenly it looks like it's okay if you can cut the workers' wages a little bit, or, you know, cut here or there. And what we need is some guarantees that if we're gonna be spending city money on this, that we're gonna get valued down the road. Anyway, barring doing what I suggested, I would suggest that you put it off until these issues can actually be addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this evening? All right, further discussion from council members? Mr. Hess?
Thanks.
I think there's another speaker.
All right, we'll let Mr. Hess speak.
Oh, you can go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Okay.
I'll call on you, sir.
This is one of the few times I've found myself in a position of being at odds with a significant number of friends. And it's enlightening in some ways about my time on the city council, but I appreciate the comments of everyone who came in. I was thinking about how a lot of my formative experience that has brought me to serve on the council and caused me to have a lot of interest in these projects was Dr. Shively's planning classes here at U of M. So I appreciate all of the comments. But one thing that I have come to realize over the last couple of years is an immense faith in our local government, an immense faith in our processes, and an immense faith in our ability to come to positive outcomes as a community. And I think that that opportunity is better placed, as several of my colleagues said, in management agreements and operations agreements and other places throughout this process. And I just wanted to commit to everyone here that I am certainly supportive of labor, I'm certainly supportive of living wages, and of creating good working conditions, of creating the best possible project that we can. I am going to vote to advance the agreement tonight with the commitment that at every opportunity, those issues will be on the front of my mind. And that faith that I've had in our processes extends to my colleagues who are on the negotiating group, and I'll share, continue to share ideas with them and continue to trust that they'll make this an excellent project.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. We do have another public comment, sir?
Yes, I'll just respond briefly. My name is Jim Glan. I'm a Missoula resident, and I'm a member of the Union of Engineers and Scientists at Boeing. And my history in labor contract negotiation is that it's, you hear many wonderful things upfront from your employer or the person that is in a position to make all the decisions, and it doesn't always pan out. So I don't see any, I don't see any difficulty with having a prenuptial arrangement with the various contractors that are lined up for this wonderful project. The taxpayers and workers and homeowners in Missoula, you know, deserve to be protected.
Thank you, sir. All right, further discussion? Mr. Von Lassberg?
I just wanted to be clear, the motion that came out of committee, the agreement that was moved out of committee did not contain Section 4.5F. I just am affirming to everybody is clear that that is the case. Correct?
Correct. Further discussion? Mr. DeBary?
I should have said this when I had my previous comments. I hope everybody realizes that the fingerprints of the Missoula Community Benefits Coalition are all over this project, that your efforts have been listened to, they've affected land use, they've affected the commitment that council's made towards making sure that there's a mix of uses taking place here, and they've affected council's approach to the land use agreement, which takes into account how we're gonna address one of the most significant resources we have in this community, and that's the Clark Fork River. As you probably know, this master development agreement is just one of a number of agreements that are gonna actually get, sort of hang on to the master development agreement. And there's something that I'd like to quote, it says, "The collateral agreements which" will, I'm sorry, let me just start this again. "The collateral agreements will be more specific in regard responsibility, schedules, and default remedies. Those agreements and implemented and related actions completed, they will take precedence, and the position of the master development agreement will diminish." So the point of this is, is that there are gonna be a host of other agreements that are gonna get hung off this master development agreement that can speak specifically to some of these other issues, one of which, as Mr. Von Lassberg said, is the land use agreement, which we've worked extensively on and will be back to land use and planning in the coming months. I think I'll stop there. Thanks.
Ms. Marther?
I just want to say that I value all the community comment that we got, and I, you know, I heard it in written form, and I've heard it on, I've been reading it on Facebook, and I know a lot of people here. I still feel, after hearing the comments, that there's a fundamental misunderstanding of what is actually in front of us to vote on. And one of the speakers, Ms. Pharaoh, who's my neighbor and my friend, I hope, said that, you know, all we're being asked to include is this one paragraph referencing a labor peace agreement. But if you read that one paragraph, and I don't know how many people here read that one paragraph, it says that the rest of the development agreement is contingent on the CBC and the developers coming to some external agreement that none of us are a party to. And that's what so many people in council are fundamentally uncomfortable with. We can't give up that much of our oversight to a group. I don't, honestly, I don't know who all is in the CBC. I know some people are, because I'm friends with them, and I go to the same meetings and groups as those people. But, you know, it's not just a matter of adding in one simple paragraph, and then that's gonna make sure that there's apprenticeships for women and all these other things that we value. And I do value those things, but it's gonna be a bigger communication, a bigger conversation than that. And I still feel pretty good about voting on this tonight, and I wish that there had somehow been a better dialogue and it hadn't all been crammed into the last week of this for the public comment, because I don't feel like this is being rushed, to be honest. I just feel like there's been a rush to get people to come to city, to comment tonight. And I'm happy to discuss with people more in meetings or without. Thanks.
Ms. Bentley?
Thanks, everybody, for coming down. I appreciate all of the comments from my fellow councilors, and I've been, everything's been pretty much covered. I wanted to, really wanted to take the time to reiterate what Councilman DeBary just said. So the community development, the group, put together a number of issues that they wanted addressed in the project, and we've met almost all of them. And I haven't really heard any acknowledgement of that. I feel like, I feel like there is a little bit of misunderstanding about what we're being asked to vote on tonight. I feel like there isn't a lot of understanding that we have several other agreements that, like John said, are, if we don't, if we don't come to agreement with the developer on the parking agreement and the land use agreement that incorporates all these pieces for the Clark Fork River and incorporates all of the trails and incorporates all of the connections and incorporates all of the green space and the public space, then this agreement is moot. And we have an operations agreement for the conference center, which is owned by the city. It's not like we're giving away all of our leverage here tonight. We are initiating a process. I feel a little bit, I don't feel rushed at all. I've been, you know, thinking about this and dealing with this for years. We've had this issue in front of council for years. We've had many, many meetings about land use, about connections, about, I mean, I see this as a positive project for Ward 3. I live right across the river in the Riverfront neighborhood, near the Sawmill District. I think this project will do wonderful things for the neighborhood, and I think it'll do wonderful things for downtown. It extends the downtown. It helps implement the downtown master plan so that we can go east and west and not just on Haggins. There's just so many wonderful things in this project, and I feel like they've really gotten lost, and there hasn't been a lot of recognition of that. So I guess I feel, I mean, I'm a little- So I guess I feel, I mean, I'm a little, I guess I'm a little emotional because I, I feel like I am, I'm doing something like betraying people that I care about, and I, and I'm, you know, that, that's upsetting, but I, but I just feel like this is a really, really good project, and that we have plenty of opportunity to weigh in on these things. I mean, I remember when the Sommel District moved forward, people said, we have to do affordable housing, we have to do affordable housing. And we said, and the council said at the time, this isn't the right time. And then, at that time, people testified and said, you're never going to do it if you don't do it now. Well, you know what? We just built Sweetgrass Commons in the Sommel District. So I guess I, you know, I have more faith in, I have faith in local government and in the process. And I, and I, and I do think we can make, have a wonderful project for the community and for downtown. And I'm, I'm sorry if I'm letting people down by voting yes tonight, but I just, I really think this is a great project for our community, and I do think we can get there, and that we've done so much to incorporate what has been asked of us in terms of land use and, you know, all of the things that the community values. So I'll be voting yes.
So I will suggest that the lion's share of the things that the Community Benefits Coalition articulated as values are contained in municipal code, building code, zoning, and our other regulations, and are required by us, by this body, and will be required here. Mr. Wolverton asked about assurances. There are assurances located in our zoning regulations. There are assurances located in our building codes. There are federal requirements with regard to the waterfront. There are Environmental Protection Agency and Department of Natural Resource and Conservation requirements, as well as requirements from the Army Corps of Engineers. So many of those items are addressed already as a function of laws that are on the books and codes that are on the books and regulations on the books. There is urgency here. There is not emergency. But I can tell you that interest rates are changing, and that TIF legislation, as always, is under threat at the Montana Legislature. So there is a reason for the council to move forward on this agreement that has had thorough vetting by this council and by the MRA Board, which is also made of citizens who are deeply engaged in this process. Further discussion? Seeing none, we've had public comment, we'll have a roll call vote.
Okay, on, on the agreement, I think we start with Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones? Jones votes yes. Marler? Marler votes yes. Sweeney? Sweeney votes yes. Von Laasberg? Von Laasberg votes yes. West? West votes yes. Wilkins?
Yeah.
Wilkins votes yes. Armstrong? Armstrong votes yes. Bentley? Bentley votes yes. And DeBary? DeBary votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? It's 10 ayes, 2 upsets.
And that is unanimous. We will move on to our next committee report, and that happens in Parks and Conservation. Mr. Von Laasberg?
I move, we amend the Missoula Urban Forest Management Plan by adopting the neighborhood planting plans from the riverfront, University, Rose Park, South Gate Triangle, south of 9th Street, and Moose King Gully neighborhoods described as amendment number one to the Missoula Urban Forest Management Plan. And may I comment briefly? I know that my colleague, Councilwoman West, submitted proposed amendment language, and I'm interested in accepting that language as a friendly amendment, but process-wise, she probably has to mention it, I guess.
Ms. West?
What is the press, what do I have to say to offer the friendly amendment? Just that, okay. All right, so I'll read the amendment. So I, I'll read it, and then I'll speak to it. So I wanted to replace the last paragraph of the tree plant amendment with, "The neighborhood planting plans contain this amendment, our neighborhood recommendations to narrow tree choice as a subset of Missoula's adopted street tree list to be used when selecting new and replacement street trees during reforestation efforts. However, a property owner may select from all 139 trees on the city's approved list when supplementing the city's boulevard reforestation planting efforts if the selected tree's size, structure, and water, water use is site-appropriate." And the reason I am offering this amendment is because I'm trying to strike a balance between being able to maximize the benefits of the state of Missoula being able to place advanced orders on the open market and the added efficiency of knowing what trees go where with the ability of an individual homeowner having a choice on what they plant based on that whole list of trees, and also what's available to them on the open market and what works for their site. So we have a trees-in-essence crisis, and to speed up the replacement and planting rate of both the city and on the homeowner's end, we, they should be able to work on separate tracks but to achieve a common goal. And so I'm all for the city creating purchasing power and efficiency in their processes, but that shouldn't preclude individuals from being able to do their part in the larger picture of reforesting our community. So since technically every boulevard planting requires a permit and approval from the city forester, it seems that additional approval of deviations from the neighborhood planting plans is a redundancy.
Mr. Von Laasberg?
So I accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay, all right. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, anyone in the audience care to comment? Chief Painter?
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Mike Painter. I live at 840 Woodford, Ward III rules. And I also would like to thank Julian Devlin, who's here, and Margaret Molino, who couldn't be here this evening. They represented Rose Park on the Tree Planting Committee. I met with Chris Bosie quite a bit. I'm here to ask you tonight to support this, and I endorse these women as well. Julian and Margaret invested a significant amount of time working with Chris and educating themselves on the goals of the Urban Forest Management Plan. I don't think either Chris or the neighborhood councils have any intent to be heavy-handed. Chris especially has been gentle, letting Painter down easy when I ask each year about using a 3D printer to develop a cold-smoke-bearing hybrid in my yard. I think the work Park and Rex has done in developing a plan to support one of our community's most valuable resources will be a great boon for us, and all our neighborhood appreciates the opportunity to be involved in the process of implementing that plan. I recognize that having a plan isn't quite the same as paying for it, which explains why I don't have my own kettel house, warehouse, and concert venue on each of Missoula's riverbanks. Missoula has consistently shown robust support of nature and stuff, or even, or maybe especially when nature seems a little moody, like it has been recently. I'd ask you to endorse the neighborhood tree plans toward that end. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Painter. Anyone else? All right, seeing no further discussion, we will have a, oh, let's just do a roll call to make it easy.
On the motion to adopt the plan as amended, Jones?
Yeah.
Jones votes yes. Marler?
Yeah.
Marler votes yes. Sweeney?
Yeah.
Sweeney votes yes. Von Laasberg?
Yeah.
Von Laasberg votes yes. West? West votes yes. Wilkins? Wilkins votes yes. Armstrong? Armstrong votes yes. Bentley? Bentley votes yes. DeBary? DeBary votes yes. And Hess? Hess votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? That's 10 ayes and 2 upsets.
And the motion is approved. We have no additional committee reports this evening for new business.
We do have a legislative update. You've received that update from Mr. McDonald, our lobbyist, as a function of your packet this evening. A couple of things I will note and highlight. We continue to, as I alluded to earlier, we continue to defend tax agreement financing as an economic development tool at the Montana Legislature. There are a number of bills and proposals that have come forward, and we have been in committee discussing those bills and demonstrating the long-term benefit to communities of that tool, and will continue to do so. Last Wednesday, Mr. Bickel and I made a quick trip to Helena to testify in concert with the Montana League of Cities and Towns and the Montana Association of Counties advocating for a bill that would establish a local government interim commission at the legislature. One of the things that is a challenge from session to session is that by virtue of term limits, new legislators are, in many cases, unfamiliar with local government finance in particular, and so establishment of this committee would create an opportunity to establish relationships, vet notions, and educate those legislators in advance of the session. So in some cases, we would, we would not nearly, we would not have to spend nearly as much time educating those folks on issues that are pertinent to municipal government. That hearing had one challenge inasmuch as the bill as it stood would have, would have caused another standing committee to be, to be combined with yet another committee, and there was some objection to that. We certainly don't have that intention, and are continuing work with the sponsor to ensure that, that that objection is overcome as we move forward. Anything you all have to discuss this evening with regard to legislature? All right, anyone in the audience interested in commenting on anything we're doing with Montana Legislature? All right, with that, we have no additional new business. Are there additional items to be referred this evening? Seeing none of those, any miscellaneous communications reports, petitions, or announcements? Seeing none, as always, ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for your service, and we'll be adjourned.